Again, welcome to the 5:30 PM April 26 City Council Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions or requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council should be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Before we go further and we move into special recognition and presentations, council, I need to add two presentations to the agenda, so I need someone to make a motion on the proclamation to stamp out hunger.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I need a proclamation for Women's Lung Cancer, excuse me, Women's Lung Health Week.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. City Manager.
When would you like to do this, Mayor?
I'd like to do them right at the beginning here with our proclamations.
Right now?
Thank you for the motions and the seconds and the vote. City Manager, proclamations and recognitions.
So bear with this voice that I have. Orlando City lost on Sunday, and I screamed for them. An official proclamation of the city of Titusville, whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable foods as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than a billion pounds of food has been collected. And whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work, their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in the community stays in the community, and we support the carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. Therefore, I, Dan E. Diesel, by the authority vested in me as mayor, do proclaim Saturday, May 14, 2022, as Stamp Out Hunger Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day. Signed, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor.
But I do want to add, when they talk about letter carriers who do this on certain Saturdays, another thing that letter carriers do to benefit us, you've seen them out there at Christmas and collecting toys, I really wanted to add that, and I appreciate them doing that, and very thankful. So with that, we'll move to the second one.
An official proclamation of the city of Titusville, whereas every two and a half minutes, a person in the United States is diagnosed with lung cancer. Whereas a lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths for women and men. Whereas lung cancer screening saves lives and advocacy and increases awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened, and whereas public support for research funding will result in new treatments and better methods of early detection. And whereas Lung Force is a national initiative led by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer. Therefore, I, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor of the city of Titusville, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 9 through May 15 as Women's Lung Health Week. Signed, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor.
Before we even go into the presentation, do you want to give like a one minute?
Yes, my name is Deborah Smith. I'm a teacher at Suntory Elementary. Mr. Jordan, you were one of the best school board members we ever had.
Oh, God.
And, um... I've been in the county a long time, and I meant what I said. So I'm representing, well, let me, let me just give you one minute. I was diagnosed with stage four lung cancer four years ago, and look at me today, I'm still teaching. So my purpose here tonight is to raise awareness for lung cancer and the research, and continue to keep it prevalent with raising funding. And it's working, obviously, because I'm still teaching and doing wonderful, but it, it shook my world up. I mean, I eat right, I am healthy, I never saw it coming, so never smoked a day in my life. So just a pain in the hip that turned into lung cancer. The point of this is, I want to make people aware, listen to your body, lung cancer is real, it's the number one killer with men and women in the world. So I'm four years out and doing great, and so I'm just trying to spread the word about lung cancer and American Lung Association. So thanks for having me here.
Thank you for being here, in more ways than one. And I, for one, and I taught biology for 13 years, and I remember discovering then that lung cancer was so prevalent and like the number one killer, as you said. And we don't think of that so much sometimes in women. And so for you to do this is, is a cry and an outreach that we certainly appreciate. So thank you, and again, thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Next, Mayor, if you could just kind of stand by, we'll get another employee recognition here. So with that, we'd like to recognize the Employee of the Month for April 22, who is Rachel Mueller of the Planning Department, as a City of Titusville Employee of the Month for April 22. And Emily Campbell is going to present the narrative for you.
Good evening, council. For those of you who don't know, my name is Emily Campbell. I work for the city clerk's office, and I'm also a liaison to the city Student Advisory Council. I nominated Ms. Rachel Mueller and the Sustainability Planner as Employee of the Month for her time, knowledge, and commitment outside of her normal scope of work, for her support to the city Student Advisory Council at the Student Leadership Seminar. Ms. Mueller gave a presentation on the background of planning to the 35 students in attendance and executed the seminar's main activity, where the students broke into small groups and created model cities. Ms. Mueller's professionalism and teaching abilities with the seminar's guests played a huge role in the seminar. Thank you.
It seemed like for a while she was up here in this hot seat for about every other week in a sustainability presentation, and we appreciate you very much, and you're just all over the city doing that. Thank you. And thank you, Emily, for doing that. I know that was pretty good. City Manager?
Yes, yes, sir, Mayor and Council. We are on item 4B, which is the annual comprehensive financial report for FY 2021, a presentation for the FY 2021 Annual Audit of the City of Titusville, as prepared by the accounting firm of James Moore Certified Public Accountants and Consultants. New actions required, and Zach, welcome.
All right, thank you. Zach Shalifor, partner, James Moore and Company CPAs. So as the city manager mentioned, we are here to review the annual audit for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2021. I would like to start by introducing Hillary Seer, who is with me as well. She's the Audit Manager on the engagement. And a big thank you as well to the council for the opportunity to work with the city. This is our fifth year, final year of the current audit contract, so while we do hope to be back here again next year, we do appreciate the relationship, working with you all, with your staff as well. You've got a great group here, so we'll go over that. But do want to thank as well staff. Terry and Jenna, I know, are here as well. Only got to work with Terry briefly after she started. Jenna, though, it's been a couple of years. So, you know, in that finance director transition period, you know, your staff definitely held down the fort, and I think you all are in a very strong position going forward. So with regard to the financial statements, first and foremost, taking a look back at the prior year, the city does prepare what's called now an annual comprehensive financial report. And what that entails is there's a handful of additional reporting elements to this report that are prepared and then submitted to the GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers' Association, for review and consideration for this award. The prior year financial statements were awarded the certificate. This year's report has the same additional components. We expect that once again, that certificate will be awarded. So in this document, it's a pretty large document. One notable accomplishment of staff is that most cities of similar size, we help prepare the final document, handling some of the major components such as the statements and the notes. This is one where your staff prepares, you know, on their own, the entire document, and then they take the five reports that we issue and insert those. That is one that, again, many cities of similar size do not do all of that in-house, so it doesn't really, there's nowhere to acknowledge it, but did want to at least share that fact with regard to what your internal team does. With regard to the five reports that we issue, the first is the audit report on the financial statements. We did issue an unmodified opinion, which states that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is the best opinion that we can issue and what you want to see here and have had here in past years. The second report is on internal control and compliance. We perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, and that requires us to, if we come across any deficiencies in internal control, whether it's related to the design or functioning of those controls, or any significant non-compliance related to grants, budget, or debt, we would have to identify those findings here. There were no comments or modifications to this report. I will note, last year, we did have one comment in this report. Corrective action was taken and was noted as such in this report. So that's always what you want to see here. Comments are not a bad thing. It's about what do you do with those? Do you get those corrected the next year, as was done in this case? The third report relates to a federal single audit. On the city exceeded the threshold by spending more than $750,000 in federal grant dollars. So therefore, we have to go and perform really a mini compliance audit over those major grant programs. We did perform that testing and had no findings to report with regard to the actual compliance in those grant programs or the internal controls over compliance. The fourth report, we issue a management letter required by the Florida Auditor General. It's really kind of a catch-all of items, mostly centered on financial condition. If there were any red flags or concerns, we would have to identify those here. As we'll talk about shortly, the city's in a very strong financial position, so no issues to report in that letter. And then the final report is we have to look at the city's compliance with state statutes over investment activity and investment policies. And there, we did note the city to be in compliance with those specified statutes. And on a side note, there is also a separate audit for the second year that we issued related to the CRA. The city's CRA financials are all in the city's financial statements, but this was a new requirement from the state last year, where they just wanted a separate document with the same information. But in that also includes a report on the use of the CRA funds, where we did note the use of those dollars to be in accordance with the CRA plan and state statutes surrounding the use of CRA funds. With regard to the numbers, looking at your general fund, which of course is the primary operating fund of the city, we look at your total fund balance, or your assets minus liabilities, so about $14.5 million. That was an increase from the prior year due to some timing differences in debt and when the debt proceeds are spent on vehicle acquisitions, as well as just in general, looking at when this budget was adopted, with summer of 2020, kind of peak uncertainty related to COVID. So revenues had been down, you tightened your belt with regard to expenses. So really, we've seen a lot of cities with similar increases just because of what the mindset and game plan was going into that year with COVID. Fortunately, everything worked out pretty favorably in terms of sales taxes rebounding, property tax values not crashing as was feared, and so forth. So the city, again, in a very strong position, coming out of kind of that budget cycle that related to the uncertainty with that COVID year, as we went through that, that first summer about two years ago. So with regard to those different buckets of fund balance, what we like to do is really measure that by taking your assigned plus your unassigned fund balance, which represent kind of your residual unrestricted funds, as well as your stabilization reserve of almost $6 million. To put that all together and show about a $12 million reserve in terms of those unrestricted or committed reserve funds, and then put that into context relative to what you spent in the current fiscal year, about 40.8, almost $41 million. And we come up with a percentage of almost 30%, or about three and a half months in reserves. Now, it's a small increase over the prior year, and then also exceeds the minimum recommendations set forth by the GFOA of two months, which they really say if you're coastal, three months is probably a better minimum, or about 25%. So you're really kind of right in line with and slightly above that minimum recommendation. So that's the second year now over that level, I believe. So definitely, again, kind of a strong position to be in, coming out of not just COVID now, but really the new challenge going forward is just expenses. Looking at inflation, minimum wage, and so forth, there's a lot now of expense uncertainty, just like two years ago was about the revenue side, where we didn't really know what the future held and would look like as you're trying to project, well, what are fuel costs and other costs going to be 15 months from now, when you're still in that next budget cycle that you'll be talking about here and setting that budget in the next few months? Looking at your business-type funds, the main one here, of course, is your water and sewer utility. We look at this at a point in time and from a trend perspective to see if there's any red flags that pop up or otherwise. Really, no concerns here. There are three funds that show a negative unrestricted number. That is all driven by your OPEB liability that gets reported on your statements now and allocated. If you took that out as kind of a non-cash, non-current type item, those funds all would be in the positive as well. So no real concerns looking at these funds, both where they're at and those three-year trend with regard to their activity. And then lastly, I mentioned briefly, OPEB, that number still kind of is out there. Again, it's not one that you're trying to fund tomorrow, but it does have to get reported with regard to what the actuaries determine as that unfunded liability. On the pension front, we have really good news there. Both of your pension plans returned over 20% investment income this year. From a financial perspective, the unfunded liability, or in this case, asset, is shown as a point in time. From a funding perspective, with regard to what the actuaries look at, that impacts the money going in from the city, that gets smoothed in over a period of time, so you don't have crazy fluctuations up or down. But from a financial reporting standpoint, accounting standards do require that this be reported basically as of a specific point in time. So you can see there, both plans, about 103% funded based on this measurement. I'm pretty sure if we went and had the actuaries measure those as of today, they're probably back under 100%, just based on the way the market has gone. So again, this market value basis is different than what is used from a funding perspective. And just because of the massive investment income in fiscal year 2021, there's a little bit more difference between those two measurements than probably in most years past. But again, the key here, continuing to move in the right direction with regard to the overall health and funding of those plans. They always say, you know, you're never as good as you look, you're never as bad as you look. So it looks good as of 9/30, but again, that's probably a little bit lower if we looked at it today. So it's always about taking that long-term view when talking about the pensions. Final thought on the pensions is, a number of years ago, we did add this slide to kind of just put into perspective what the discount rates being used were and how those had trended over time and how they compared to the Florida retirement system. As CPAs, we can't tell you what is right or wrong, or what these should be, but we kind of can benchmark and say, hey, you're higher than others or not. There were a couple of years where those plans were a little bit higher, which maybe represented, you know, a little bit of an overly aggressive assumption, but that discount rate has been decreased in recent years. So that's just kind of good to see in terms of, you know, when we look at saying, well, what are the what-if scenarios or the worst-case scenario if you fall short? The lower those rates are as set by the pension boards, it's not a city council determination, but the lower those pension boards set that, the less potential exposure there is with regard to additional funding by the city over the course of time if those investment assumptions are not met. So just from our perspective, it's been a positive, I think, to see those rates coming down a little bit more in line with where the state's at and where we generally see a lot of other pension plans. So overall, pretty good news on that front, looking at kind of what goes on behind the scenes to come up with those unfunded liabilities or now overfunded asset numbers, as well as the overall trend in that activity. So with that, that covers all of my comments. We'll hit it at a pretty high level, but I'd be more than glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? I see none. Thank you so much. I appreciate your report. I appreciate what you do, more than your report. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
City Manager?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Counsel, we're on to 4C, which is Public Financial Management Incorporated. We'll present a end-of-the-fiscal-year 2021 and first-quarter FY 2022 report. Sir?
Good evening, council. I am Scott Sweetin. I'm a senior managing consultant with PFM Asset Management. And forgive me in advance, I may lose my voice halfway through this. This is a speech season for me, so I've had probably five today. So what we're going to do, initially, we're just going to take a look at the annual report ending 9/30/21. And essentially, our philosophy aligns with the public sector goals. We manage the fixed income portfolio for safety, liquidity, and yield, quite different than the OPEB portfolios that you're probably used to looking at as well. Current market themes, things have changed dramatically since the end of the third quarter of last year. Russia has invaded Ukraine, that is providing numerous issues. The US economy is showing strength, at least in the labor markets. We're continuing to battle inflation at 40-year highs pretty much across the board. The Federal Reserve has already raised rates 25 basis points, and currently, we're pricing in six to seven rate hikes for this calendar year. And I'll review the Treasury yield curve and how that has dramatically changed since the end of the third quarter as well. Here we have a Fed dot plot, which basically just projects where the members of the Federal Reserve are indicating rate hikes throughout the year. You can see the dispersion in 2022, 2023 as well, and a little bit further out in the curve, 2024. But essentially, where we stand right now, we're looking, and what's priced into the marketplace is six to seven rate hikes. Now, this gives you a great visual on how dramatic the yield curve has changed. The light blue line is as of December 31, 2021. The dark blue line is as of actually the end of the first quarter of this year. So you can see a dramatic steepening in the yield curve, especially in that two-year to three-year timeframe, which is most relevant to your portfolio. My apologies. And what we see here also is an inversion between the two-year and the 10-year, at least for a temporary time period. Why is that important? Historically, that has been indicative of a upcoming recession. So this basically just transpired over a very short trading period. So all indications are that that may not actually follow through. If you look at the right side of the slide, we can actually see where US Treasury returns were in the first quarter of 2022. Pretty much, you can see across the board, there was no place to hide in fixed income, one-year, one-to-three-year, one-to-five-year, and one-to-10-year Treasuries, all negative returns across the board. The upside is, when we are investing capital back into the marketplace, we are finding much more attractive yields than what we have looked at over the last two years. So that is the upside. That will provide a bit of a cushion going forward for any unrealized losses that we're currently looking at. This is just an overview on the first quarter of 2022. And again, any sector within the fixed income space had negative returns. That will probably continue throughout the second quarter as well. But looking longer term, which is really what we do as a money manager, over a 10-year average, you can see where each of these particular sectors have performed, Treasuries, Agencies, asset-backed securities, corporates A to AAA-rated, and triple B corporates as well. Now, just to take a look at the portfolio, as of September 30, 2021, total market value, $55,208,452 and change. The portfolio effective duration was right in line with the benchmark duration. Yield at cost at 74 basis points, and yield at market, 52 basis points. Portfolio credit quality, double A-rated, so well diversified across highly rated issues. The upper right quadrant is essentially the asset allocation breakdown, given the various asset classes. The bottom right quadrant is the duration distribution. The blue portion of the bar is the portfolio. The gray portion is actually the benchmark, and as I showed you in the upper left, it's right in line with the benchmark. And in the bottom-left quadrant, we're looking at credit ratings from Standard and Poor. And again, the average credit rating for the portfolio is double A. Now, looking at performance as of September 30, 2021, in the third quarter, the portfolio return point... returned point zero eight percent. The benchmark was at point zero six. Looking out longer term, which is why we're here for the annual report, the portfolio returned thirty-one basis points. The benchmark was at a point zero three, so a healthy outperformance over the last twelve months. And looking further out in the timeline, you can see we outperformed the benchmark over a three-year, five-year, and ten-year period as well. So performance has been strong. Just giving you a little bit to look forward to, the first quarter and the second quarter of this year are going to be, you're going to be looking at negative returns until the inflation gets under grips and a few other things fall into line. But the next two slides that we have here, primarily for compliance purposes, this is the sector allocation analytics. So this is showing where the portfolio was allocated as of September 30th, 2021. The blue portion of the bar is where you were actually allocated. The gray portion of the bar is the limits imposed by your investment policy. As you can see, we've got a very healthy buffer between where you're allocated and the limits of your investment policy. Really, that puts us in an ideal position as the investment manager. It allows our managers to be very nimble. Also, when value does arise in the marketplace, we're able to take advantage of that quickly without really any constraints. Now, again, from a compliance standpoint, just taking a look at the max maturity analytics, this is essentially the maximum maturities for each of these categories within the fixed income space. Again, the blue shaded region is indicating where you were allocated as of September 30th, and the gray portion is indicating the maximum maturities for each of those categories. So again, a very healthy buffer there. The next two slides are essentially just an account summary of the portfolio holdings. And you can see the given asset classes, the market value percentage, and also ratings from S&amp;P, Moody's, and Fitch. So I think that's just a great overall snapshot, give you an idea of what is currently in the portfolio. And just as a comparison, looking at fiscal year 2020 in comparison to fiscal year 2021, total market value fiscal year 2020, fifty-one million, five-hundred-thirty-three-thousand, six-ninety-one, and effective duration, one-point-eight-seven years. Yield at cost, yield at market. On the right side, you can see fiscal year 2021, market value is up about three-point-six million. And again, duration really just changed incrementally. Yield at cost and yield at market, now those are significantly different just because of the economic period that we were going through, coming out of COVID. And this slide in particular, just a summary of what we do at PFM Asset Management, total assets under management. We've been doing this for over forty-one years. And those would be all the prepared remarks I have. I would open it up for any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, anybody? I'm looking. I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We're on to item four D, which is the traffic calming presentation by our public works director, Kevin Cook.
Good evening. Get the presentation. So, smile, smile. There's no financial slides in this, so just so you know. So the city manager said this is update of some changes to our traffic calming program that can all the time coming. Just going to give you a brief overview of what we do now, why we're making the change, and what the new program looks like. Just a refresher, system petitions are required to start the current program. We require fifty-plus one percent of the street to sign off before we look at it. Speed humps are the only option that we currently allow, and the criteria being that's a local street, no less than a thousand feet, no more than two lanes, and eighty-fifth percentile, at least thirty-five miles per hour with a thousand vehicles per day. Eighty-fifth percentile is a percentile used to set speed limits. That's the significance of that. If the warrants are met, the city pays one hundred percent of the cost. If they're not, we do allow a citizen to pay seven hundred fifty dollars to move the installation forward. So why the change needed. Over the years, a lot more opportunities in traffic calming, especially on local streets, than what we implore now. Speed humps are intrusive to public safety in particular. I'm not going to go through the whole list here, but we do have them on our website where they're not always favorable to all modes of travel, especially for an ambulance crossing them at high speed or a police car. And the criteria for approval needed updating, the standard was set pretty high for speed, so we looked at bringing that down. So we developed a new program that will allow a citizen to make a request and take us through a review process, counting traffic. Still relies on a petition before things are installed that will be physical barriers, because some of you might know that we've, some measures, like rumble strips, are not real good for neighborhoods. Some people like them, others won't. This allows the neighborhood to essentially take a vote that they won't come back and ask for them to be moved. We changed the criteria. Still only on local streets. We're not going to do traffic calming on collectors. We lowered the length down to five hundred feet, and we are stipulating that the street cannot be cul-de-sac. Primarily, high volume and speed comes from cut-through traffic or right straight roads that don't have ends. And we lowered the posted speed limit has to be below thirty, which none of our local streets are over thirty. So we introduce two phases of calming. One will be a non-physical, one will be physical, and we still, like I said, require the petitions to be a mode of support from the rest. And then the priorities will, instead of being the first come, first served, will now be ranked by a scoring system. This allow, if we don't have funding in one year, the rankings move forward year to year, keeps the higher need ones on top, where others will fall below. So just introducing the concept of two phases in traffic calming. Phase one would be encouragement enforcement engineering, using speed trailers and feedback signs where we can to let people know how the speeds are done, and also us reviewing what we can do from pavement markings, enhanced signage, advanced warnings, to help promote slowing down the speeds. Phase two is where the more physical impacts come, where you're making the street less comfortable, therefore, speed drops. Those fall into four categories, horizontal, vertical deflections, the street width and routing reductions, restrictions. To give you an idea for the physical, physical deflections and horizontal world, the visual on the left is a chicane, where the curb lines are moved, pushed out, so the cars have to create a curve on a straight street. The one on the right is a mini roundabout. We're taking a four-way intersection and turning into roundabout. If you remember, the Vision Zero presentation's right angle crashes are the worst ones. So by eliminating that, you lessen the impacts of a high-speed or high-risk intersection. From a vertical standpoint, while a speed hump does fall in the vertical, there are other options. The one on the left is a raised intersection, where the entire intersection is elevated, where a car will go up a ramp to a flat point, makes you slow down through it. The one on the right is an offset table, where they, instead of being side by side, they create a little bit of illusion to slow you down. Street width reduction, as said, the left photo is a choker, where the curb lines are pushed inward to minimum lane width. So you may have a fifteen-foot lane shut down to a nine, and making the driving path uncomfortable, you'll slow down by nature. The one on the right is doing the same thing in intersection by bulging the curbs out. We have some of these spread throughout downtown currently. A little more of the extreme is the routing restriction. If you visit cities like Daytona Beach, they've done a lot of routing restrictions off of International Boulevard to take the neighborhoods out of being able to connect to the bigger roadways. So on the left is literally, they just closed down the lane, the traffic. You're not able to pass through in the right lane any longer. The one on the right, they restrict it and force a right turn. So the bikes, the walkers continue through, but the drivers have to route around that area. And then just go into the scoring system, which would, we use to rank our priorities. Eighty-fifth percentile counts again, but we put the measure twenty-five miles per hour instead of thirty-five. It generates a score. Estative speeding would be anyone that's over ten, ten percent above the top end of the speed limit. The volume of traffic be compared, putting the emphasis on the higher-volume roadways, getting the more attention. And then if they are within the thousand feet of a school or a park, we'll warrant increase in there as well. Looking to, obviously, you're going to get more walkers around schools and parks, especially elementary schools. And although we put a lot into sidewalks, you still may need to calm the roads, too. Critical locations would be subjective. If there's trail intersections or high-ped areas. Crash history, going back three years, each crash on the roadway. Any pending road construction, that's really for efficiency purposes. We're about to pave the road. A lot of these improvements are easier to be done when the road's being built up and worked on than it is to come in after later. And then just to set a standard for the physical constraints, we set the minimum score fifteen. Just so the council's aware, I looked at the last three years, we only had one street that hit fifteen of our speed humps. So that one would have been eligible for full physical traffic calming. So moving forward, we will rank these, bring them back as a priority nature as we ask for funding for traffic calming. Be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, I appreciate that. Certainly, it's a perfect time for this with the increased traffic that we see on a daily basis. And I appreciate the scoring system. And as people ask all the time, and I do probably get this one more, thinking of what's it take to get a speed hump? Well, you put some good reasons down there, maybe not to get a speed hump, where people try to make up time in between. It's difficult on emergency vehicles. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I see none. Thank you for the report. City manager?
And the last item is four E, and it's letters of appreciation that we've received this month. And the first is from Solid Waste Public Works, Tony Colwellhoe, equipment operator, and community development, Tim Ford, who is our redevelopment planner.
Thank you. And last but not least, we go to petitions and requests from the public, but just a reminder, this isn't the Windover part yet. I'm sure that is coming. So with that in mind, petitions and requests for the five-thirty meeting. Stan, I know you got something to say. Come on, Stan. I lost you out there for a minute.
Thank you. Stan Johnston, former employee of the city of Tyusville and former employee of Brevard County, and used to be an instructor at Brevard Community College. I introduce myself as a professional engineer, but in some ways, I'm ashamed of what my profession has done, because they have caused of a lot of problems that we have in our government and in our culture. So I'm trying to do what is right. I want you to notice something in our, in the agenda item. It says, for example, four A, B, C, D, and E, it says, does a comment, no action is requested, no action requested, no action is requested. A few years ago, we didn't put those items in there. And the reason we put them on the agenda items is because we don't want people to participate in discussion. How can I say something like that? Well, because in the last few years, is the city has reduced from five minutes to three minutes, or speaking time, and reduced, made restrictions upon consent items and so forth. So the city doesn't want people to talk, and neither does the county. It just seems to be a common thread in our government, that we don't want public participation. I'm mentioning this because I would, it's interesting that on item four B, which is the annual comprehensive financial for fiscal year 2021, that was an expensive report containing over a hundred and eighty pages. And it says on here, no action is Well, I would think that someone would have some, if someone had some objections, and I guess that's possible, is that maybe something can be done, because there certainly is areas for objections on this. Interestingly, on this particular report, it has a plan of hierarchy, you know, like council, city manager, and so forth. And the top of the council is not, is not, at the top of the city government, is not the council, it's not the city manager, it says citizens, which I thought was unusual, as if we're, the people are in control, which I think is, and I would also like to mention, I don't have much time, but I thought that Mr. Cook did an outstanding job. I was very surprised with that. And I think it's interesting that we got twenty percent increase on some of our investments. That's a wow. Stormwater utility, I'd like to know whether that is an enterprise fund or not. Because I don't believe it used to be. I'm concerned that we had, we adopted a ten-million-dollar plan for reuse. May I finish that sentence?
I see no extension. Thank you, sir.
Of course, you don't want to buy nothing ten million dollars.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else petitions or requests at this meeting?
Mayor, we do have another card. It's Edna Humphrey.
Card on what?
On this item. I know we don't need cards, but she may not be aware.
I'm confused. We don't do put cards on petitions or requests.
We have some individuals that haven't been here in the past that think they have to submit a card. So she did. It's, I'm not sure she's still here.
That's what we'll do. Call the card.
Edna Humphrey.
You think it's her, it might be for Windover.
She had number five on her item. Was it E?
Are you wanting to speak on the Windover event?
That's what I thought. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, and believe me, we will get there. Is that it? Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
All right. Just let me, you're good. Let me toss it out there one more time. Petitions and requests for the five-thirty. All right. With that, we will adjourn. City manager, we good? We will adjourn and reconvene at six-thirty. Thank you.